Welcome to the Tri-City Herald Editorial Board with Benton County Commission candidates, Michael Alvarez and Bill Jenkins. Lori Williams, our executive editor, is in the conference room as well. And we've got Michael Paoli, a community representative for the Herald Board, and Ken Robertson, he's a retired executive editor for the Tri-City Herald, Jack Briggs, who is a retired publisher from the Tri-City Herald, and Matt Taylor, who is the retired editorial writer for the Tri-City Herald. So with that, I'll give each of you two minutes. Okay, Michael, why don't you go ahead with your two minutes? And I'll just start it whenever you get going.
You know, I always go first as Alvarez last name. I don't know, it starts with an A. So, once again, my name is Michael Alvarez, and I'm running for Benton County Commission. I'm a proud veteran of the United States Marine Corps. I continue to serve my country and community under the Department of Homeland Security as an active member of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary. I've been a successful local business owner of a financial company for almost three decades here in Tri-Cities. I'm a faculty member, a master instructor, and I teach finance, advanced business management, consumer protection, and code of ethics to professional organizations throughout Washington State. I am the current mayor of the city of Richland, and I review and manage a $322 million-plus city budget. I will use my extensive financial and business experience to help ensure that your taxpayer money is being used in the best possible way and wasteful spending does not occur. I have a proven track record of saving taxpayers thousands of dollars in taxes annually. As your next county commissioner, I will also use my extensive finance and business experience to collaborate, important to collaborate with the cities within the county, to help create more family-based jobs, and keep Benton County taxes low, continue to support our local businesses, support our police and fire fighters to make sure they have the proper tools to ensure exceptional public safety, to rebuild aging infrastructure such as roads, sewer, water lines. Other important issues I want to tackle is protect our agriculture community, work hard to renew our public safety sales tax. We can't afford for that to sunset. And to build a top-notch mental health and substance abuse facility and treatment program to get it up and running for those who need it without raising taxes. Finally, the voters of Benton County District 2 had spoken loud and clear who they wanted to represent them during this recent primary election, where I was very humbled to receive nearly twice the amount of votes as my opponent. I'm asking for your vote on November 8th for Prosperous Benton County. Thank you.
Great, that was great. Let me just start again. Okay, Bill, whenever you get started, I'll just hit the timer.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for having both of us here. Let me just start by saying, which is too many. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on policy that'll come out. But let me just start by saying that my priorities are God, family, and community. And in that order. I graduated from the University of Redlands with a business management degree. That was 35 years ago. Well, a little bit before that because I started my business shortly after that. Thirty then, and I've been in the financial services business for 35 years. I also own a winery. I've always been a community guy. That's what I was. It was tough to consider myself a politician when I was elected to the legislature. But as a community guy, I ended up in Prosser being the school board president. In robbery, in fact, I ended up being, and still am, past district governor of District 566. To really get involved in the community thing. And that led me to running for the legislature. And once elected, served two terms, and ended up in leadership and ranking up on a community. And then you build a lot of contacts when you're in that position. And it's those contacts and relationships that I think that I can bring because those relationships were within four different counties. And it's not only the county commissioners that you do that with, but also all the cities within the county, as well as the legislators that you're working with to get your policy through. I'm committed to finishing this job. That's what I will be working on.
So, my first question for you both, you're both running as Republicans, and you both have a long history of public service. I was just wondering, what do you think separates you? Michael, maybe you could go first. What separates you from Bill, do you think?
You know, I've always chosen to go ahead and do local elected, staying within local elected politics. You know, it's my wheelhouse. I'm not interested in going into Olympia state legislators, state senators. They do a lot of different things that you don't do here in the Tri-Cities. You know, it's budgeting and financing. That's my wheelhouse, planning and zoning. I have years of experience in those type of things when it comes to public works, public roads, development. Those are the things that definitely separate me from my opponent. I've done that for the last 30 years. And I have a reputation of, you know, within those realms of being able to go ahead and listen to staff, listen to the community, do my own homework based off my own experience, and then work through that. And then also, you know, I know that Bill talked about working with state legislators and state senators and within other counties. I have very good relationships with several state legislators and people that are running now this year. And I know how to work with them to go ahead and get appropriations for the cities and the county within, with the cities within the county here to get some of the funding where we actually need to do that. But it's night and day. The local elected politics here for this, the city or the county, we're all doing the same things. Budget and financing, roads, public works, those type of things. And that's where I feel comfortable at. That's where my experience is, and that's what I'm going to go ahead and bring to the county.
Okay. All right, Phil, your turn. What do you think separates you and Michael?
Well, there are differences. A lot of it is that I've been doing this for a while and working with a lot of different people while doing it. It just hasn't been local. And local is extremely important. But I don't know the reasoning that Michael got into politics. I'm sure it's the same as mine. But I'm very, very committed to helping people. And it's not about me moving up in my political career. I'm not a lifetime politician. Now it's time, after serving in Olympia for a couple of terms, it's time to come home and help the people around here and be effective in doing it, being committed in doing it, and using common sense when doing it. I still believe in common sense, and I don't think there's enough of it out there. There's lots of issues, and we'll get into that during the discussion, that we want to get accomplished during this. But that's my reason. It comes from the bottom.
And Cecily, can I say one more thing real quick? So, you know, one of the things that I look at is, I wasn't looking at running into this race that the district lines had just changed. I was told about it about a week and a half before it was actually approved. And so to me, once again, I look at it as, you know, the city budget in Richland is about $322 million-plus. And the county's budget, if they were on annual budget, it's about $160 million on an annual basis, not a biannual. And so I know the county treasurer is the one who told me about the district lines changing and said, hey, we know what you've done on the private sector. We even know what you're doing at the city side and on the public sector. You're a great finance budgeting guy. I've known you for a while. I'd like you to run for this. And so there's a lot of challenges that are going to be coming to the county as far as budgeting, whether it's the sheriff's department or the prosecutor's department, all these different things, especially with a lot of different issues that are coming up. I just think that I'm doing the same job basically as a county commissioner now on a city level because they do the same things if you look at what their bullet points are, but it's going to be county-wide. And I think that could serve the cities within the county. You know, that's where my expertise would be. But enough said.
Sure, sure. So, one question I had is, this year, you know, the county commissioners serve on a number of boards and commissions throughout the community. And one of the hotter issues, I think, was the Ben Franklin Transit Board. They were trying to decide if they were going to send to the voters a proposal to reduce that 1/10th of 1% tax. And in the end, they decided not to do that. But I was just wondering, maybe, Bill, you could take this one first. If you had been on the transit board, do you have an idea of how you would have weighed in on that, what you would have said?
So, I don't know everything that the board knew about that. When you think about it, and you think about the amount of dollars that are spent and the amount of excess dollars that are there, and then plus you factor in the potential of money lost from the state if you didn't go in and do it. That was one of those dangling deals that the state put out to make that negotiation even more difficult. But then you look at the common sense side. And you look at the buses, and you look at the size, not only the size of the buses, it really doesn't matter the size because there's hardly anybody that's on whatever type of transportation they're using in that area. So, I don't see the ridership. And then when one person can get on and transfer twice and be counted as three riders, to me, that doesn't seem accountable. And really, those are the questions that I'd be having is accountability and transparency. And I'm not privy to all those numbers. So, it's hard to say how I would vote. Some very important members on that committee did go along with that. So, they have the information.
Sure, sure. I was just curious what you thought. Your turn, Michael. Did you have any thoughts on that issue?
So, you know, I think the Badger Club did an excellent job when myself and Bill was on there and asked us these type of questions. I know, I think I remember Bill saying that he would have taken the money for Ben Franklin Transit from the state. And so it's an opposite kind of direction I would go. You know, I think we have a great public transportation system in the Tri-Cities, and we've got to maintain that. I mean, even if you look at Dollar Ride, they just don't stop at the curb. If someone needs, versus a handicapped person or someone in need of help, they're going to go to the door, help them all the way versus just at the curb. So I think those are great things. I think there's city council members from Prosser on there, from West Richland to Richland to Kennewick. There's two county commissioners, I believe, from Franklin County, and at least one county commissioner that sits on the board from Benton County. And they chose the right way. You can look at appearances, but if you don't look deep into it, you say they have XYZ amount of money, but they can't go out for bonding. The money they get is from different places in this. And if we want to be taking that money from the state, we go ahead and let that go forward because they're going to need more infrastructure, more buses and stuff like that down the road. It would have, it looks good, but it would have gone down. So I think that board made an intelligent decision, informed decision, on getting that forward and moving and taking that funding. Because of that funding, they wouldn't have taken that funding. It would have went out to another community, and we would have lost out. The other thing I think on there too, that's important to know, and I lost my train of thought on that. Let me just say here real quick, so I know we're in a timeframe, is I think what's important to do, and I lost my timeframe on that, I mean, my thought process on that. But it was a good, solid decision from the board to move on and make sure that we have that. Oh, they hired a GM, a new GM. And that GM there is there to look at more efficient ways on running the transit system too. So they looked at the whole gamma and they put it in place.
Okay, great.
Mike was reading your political stuff. In one part, he would say that one of your objectives is to put Benton County on a sustainable financial track. Is it not on a sustainable track? And if it isn't, why isn't it? And what are you going to do about it?
You know, I think the key thing to do is talk to the finance manager for the county, get with the county treasurer, consenser. It's important that we also communicate with the deputy administrator and the county administrator all together. And one of the reasons the county treasurer talked to me about that is because it's challenging. They run out of zero accounting budget. And so it's tight right now. I know the prosecutors are needing, they're wanting to hire more prosecutors. The sheriff is wanting to get additional equipment to upgrade for some of the equipment that's older. So there's a lot of different things going on, and you only have so much money. So I think a good review of the budget, not criticizing it, but let's see how we can leverage it in the best possible way so that we can go ahead and fund those different departments. Because let's just be honest, not everybody, I'm not going to practice law because I'm not an attorney, but I'm really, I think I'm decent on the financial side and the budgeting side. And so that's one of the things I would want to review and look at. I hope that answers your question.
No. No. You said that you're going to put it on a sustainable financial track. You're going to do that by simply talking to county officials?
No, no, no.
You have a plan?
Yes, we need to go ahead and review the budget from each department. And that's why some of the elected officials, because it's different from the city. We have directors from each department, and they go ahead and bring their budgets forward. We're going to go ahead and have to go ahead and do the same thing with all elected officials that are asking for funding for those different departments. And then see what they're asked for and see what the money that's coming in and the money that's going out. And really go ahead and make some good educated decisions on how we can leverage those funds to do that. It's just basic things. Get the input from the elected leaders that are from those departments, work with staff, and work with the treasurer and the manager and the administrators to find out where that money is. How can we use that money the best way we can and do the best we can to go ahead and fund some of the projects? So it's a collaborative effort.
But it not only the county government, that sounds exactly what they do every year.
What's that again? I'm sorry, you broke up a little bit.
That sounds exactly what the counties do every year.
They do. Just same thing with the cities too. They do their annual budget. So, yeah, I just think it's, you know what? It's good to get a fresh set of eyes on there. And I've done that in the city of Richland with our finance director. And you know what? By golly, give you an example, the Duportel Bridge. That was going to be set up for a 20-year term for everybody to pay on for the next 20 years. I said I could get it done in 10. I worked with the finance director, worked with staff. We looked at the numbers, and it made sense. We got that bridge paid off, and actually in about four years. So it's just a new set of eyes. I mean, I'm not going to say that it's going to be perfect, and I'm going to be the say-all, do-all. But it's a collaborative effort, and I'm willing to be part of that team to do that and work with the other elected officials in their departments.
What is your resistance with the current county commissioners, Michael? What have you done with them? Have you worked on any projects with them?
Yeah, actually, you know, I'll be going to DC here pretty soon, going to Energy Community Alliance. And that's something that we do. And as a matter of fact, I think Jerome Delvin's on that committee as well. And so we're on a lot of different boards and commissions. So the city and the county commissioners, we are a lot on different types of, just like Ben Franklin Transit as well. And so we go in there, we're working together. We do talk to each other in reference to how we can go ahead and speed up the cleanup in Haverford. And also, what I call outside the fence, getting funding for the cities within the county, paying low taxes, some of that money that has come and gone here in the Tri-Cities. If we get those relationships with people in leadership over there in DC, that allows us to go ahead and obtain funding for things, to get more money for schools and those type of things in STEM schools. So I think it's important. So yes, I've worked with them. I've talked to Commissioner Small and Commissioner McKay as well.
But are there any issues where you feel like you would have taken a different path than they had chosen in recent, in the last year or so that you think you would have gone a different direction than the current administration?
You know, as far as, oh, listen, Ben Franklin Transit, I think it's good. As far as public safety sales tax, you know, we all need to get on board, and I think we need to review that. But I think there's things that differ from myself, and I'll give you an example. Myself, and I hate to say opponent, Bill, because we get along well. Where Bill wanted to go ahead, and I think in a recent forum, he said that, you know, the deputies have been out of a contract for a while. They're still negotiating back and forth. They haven't had a raise for a while, and they want a compensation, right? And a raise. And so what I think Bill says is public safety tax. He wants to do some tax shifting for the public safety sales tax. And, excuse me, and go ahead and use those public safety sales tax to give them a raise. Well, that's the opposite of what I believe. Because if we can't renew that, and it sunsets next year, how do we go ahead and continue to fund deputies and police deputies on that? So I would say that would come out of the general fund. So there's some things like that that I would have to talk to with the county commissioners. I think looking at the public safety sales tax, making sure we're doing it there. As far as the mental health and substance abuse facilities, I'm on board with that. And Matt Rosman, who I think is a deputy county administrator, is doing an excellent job on that. There's appropriations for the short-term one- to three-day facility and what it's going to be used for. There's funding appropriations, federal funding for the long-term adult facility. So I think those things are running pretty good right now. I'll go in the leadership there as I get more educated. I can speak more intelligently. But those are some of the things we've talked about, and myself with the county commissioner.
Phil, have you get a chance to talk?
Yeah. As far as what I was referring to was the tax shift, perhaps looking into the possibility of tax shifts. And I was looking at that also with Ben Franklin Transit on some ways that we would be able to help the mental health facilities that we're trying to get. If we can get some of that money from money that's not really earmarked, that would be helpful. And then also, as far as the public safety tax, you know, with that coming up to ballot, that's an issue that there has to be a lot of planning that's done with the commissioners and the whole community. Because that public safety tax really has to be, there's a lot of moving parts. It has to be able to help, like I was referring to, what Michael was referring to with the sheriffs. The problem with the sheriffs is that they can't compete with the local law enforcement agencies as far as pay. So they train their sheriffs in the sheriffs league. And it's a revolving door. This is a conversation I had with Tom Crossky. And so they need, in my opinion, they need help as far as being able to pay themselves. And then always, what I'm told, is that they don't get their full allotment that the commissioners can give them. And according to my conversation, sometimes goes to another part of the budget. And that shouldn't be. They should get their full allotment. He said the cities are good at doing that, and it's the cities. They do do that. The county does. And to me, that can change. So that's where I'm sitting on that.
So, Bill, go ahead, Lori.
Just making sure you covered any other issues you would have voted and gone a different direction on.
Well, sure, sure. Well, the Ben Franklin, like I said before, I'd have to know a little bit more about that. I, being the only candidate throughout this campaign that lives in the unincorporated areas, I really feel that we're not getting, we're getting a raw deal because there's really no way that somebody from an unincorporated area has a true voice other than showing up at a planning commission meeting with all the planning commissioners in cities or going to the commissioners meeting and being able to speak for a couple of minutes. So to me, the unincorporated areas need help. And I know a lot of farmers up around, you know, where I'm at. I live in Prosser, and so up on Patterson and all that. They're not really getting the voice, according to them. Went up there and had a few meetings with them, and they came up with a list of things that they would like to see done, like with law enforcement. I mean, they used to be up on Patterson, by Patterson, and it's not there. So talk to Crossky about that. We're trying to work on that. So I would like to see more emphasis put on some of the unincorporated areas because I feel like they've sort of been left behind in the organization.
Can I comment on that real quick?
Sure.
I appreciate it. So, you know, my dad was in the military and in the Coast Guard. That's where he retired out of. We lived in some really small towns all over on the West Coast, in Alaska and stuff like that. And I consider myself more of a country guy, outdoors person. And I've talked to a lot of the farmers out there in Prosser and Benton City, and a lot of them have supported me. We've talked about public safety. We've talked about water rights. That's something I know just on the real estate side of it. And so my goal is to go ahead and definitely reach out to a lot of the farmers out there and be part of that down there in Prosser and Benton City. And they know that. They welcome you with open arms. As far as the public safety sales tax, I know we've talked about that, but I want to make sure that everybody understands, or, excuse me, the mental health side of it. Because it's really important that we get that thing done and built in the programs in place. I know there's a purchase sales contract. Most likely, for that one-to-three-day inpatient facility will be closing in sometime in October, where that's a great place for people that need to go there for just a one- or two-day type of treatment. But it's going to be transitional housing. It's going to be where youth under 18 years old can go ahead and seek treatment as well. Look, they have $9 million that's going to go into a long-term adult facility and treatment for mental health and substance abuse. They got $5 million for running the program. And they just raised the sales tax 1/10th of 1%. I think in July or June 1st, I can't remember. You know, I'm being on camera, so I'm not as good. But to go ahead and continue that program. So that's where those monies or funds are going to come from. So we need to make sure that we use those funds for that, and then we use the public safety tax for what it was meant to be for as well. Thank you.
Bill, could I ask you a practical question? Michael mentioned it in his opening, but you are like 3,000 votes short of him. How are you going to, what's your plan to get to catch up that total?
To get the what?
You're 3,000 votes short of him. How are you going to get those votes?
Well, I think there's a very good opportunity in the people I'm talking to. What happened was that Barry Bush called me shortly after the election. And he told me that he endorsed me. And he knew that I was, I'd spoken before at the county meeting about the windmills. And that was his big item, was where the windmills. A lot of the people in that association, which I've really met a lot of them. As a matter of fact, I was with them in a couple of the parades and had a meeting with the leader of Hairs Group. That's the group that they started for the windmills. And going to be helping. And my, and I really feel, and I've talked to a few leaders about this, his 26%, my 26%, I was thinking, well, if the word gets out, and he did write a letter to the editor about this, the endorsement thing, and several other places it's gone. So that word is getting out. And if it gets out enough, I'm figuring that could be 2/3, about 2/3 of his vote, if I can get that. Some people, I've talked to Commissioner Brad Pitt. I was talking to Brad about it, and he said, why wouldn't you get 100%? Well, the fact of the matter is 2/3 would be a lot. So that would bring it to 45% to 55%. Then last week, I got the endorsement of the Republican Party. So now both Michael and I are both endorsed by the Republican Party, where for the primary, it was just him. So I'm thinking I can get some of those votes back. And that's the answer to your question.
Okay. And Jack, can I answer that too, a little bit of that? Is that okay?
Yeah, just with me.
Yeah, so just like I said, I just want to go ahead and rebut that a little bit. So I was put into a new district where both of my opponents have lived in that district too for a while. And so I had to go ahead and reconnect with the people of District 2. And I didn't know that many people, to be honest with you, in Benton City and Prosser, et cetera. And so as they got to know me and asked me a bunch of questions, you know, I think we had a good relationship there. Moving forward, and I'm not worried about that endorsement. It is what it is. I think all three of us, I've done enough. Matter of fact, I think the Badger Club, once again, did a very good job on a presentation, the pros and cons for both sides for the windmill. So I think we're all on the same page on that. But once again, But once again, my voting base, where I typically would be in, in District One, where it is Richland and West Richland, now has come aboard along with Kenneway. And so I have a pretty strong, uh, voting base now that I'm, now that it's gone countywide. So, you know, I'm going to work hard. I'm going to continue to, uh, work hard, get the word out, uh, run like I'm far behind, uh, and move on. But, uh, like I said, I think the voters of that district have spoken, uh, and, uh, I'm just waiting for the, the extra voters, uh, to, uh, to vote as well. And like I said, myself and Bill, we go along real well and, and, and may the best person win.
Uh, Mike wants to ask a question. Go for it, Mike.
Yeah, we're speaking about, uh, earlier about county commissioners also being on various boards around town. Talk about Transit Board. Uh, commissioners are also on the Board of Health. And there's been discussion about mental health and it seems some commonality in support for, uh, mental health facilities. Um, you know, today's the first, uh, day of Hispanic Heritage Month, so I'm, I'm thinking of the federal observances. The last one was Pride Month and there was a contentious discussion at the, uh, um, Ben Franklin Health District among the county commissioners over Pride Month. You know, uh, the, uh, the district had thrown out a 50% uh, depression rate, I think, a, among the LGBTQ plus communities and so forth. Anyhow, when it all came down to it, the commissioners voted three to one to shut down all Pride Month communication, uh, across the board coming from the health district. Given the discussion on mental health and how they tie in together, I'm curious how both of our candidates here today would have voted in that discussion.
Well, I, I think as far as the, that, that board, and there's been, and there's been discussion about enhancing that board and adding to it, I mean, not just the county commissioners. Um, and that's an interesting, that's an interesting discussion. Who would you add on there and who would have that majority? Um, and, and as far as, what was, what was the, the particular instance that, which voter are you referring to?
The county commissioners voted, I believe it was a three to one vote, um, for the health district to, uh, essentially go silent on Pride Month. They would not have any Pride Month communications, even those which were associated with, uh, health issues, which is part of the district's mission.
Yeah, um, you know, you need to know more on that issue. It, it would, it would be, you, you, you're privy to it. And I read up, I study on, on every vote that comes before me and, and, and the discussion with who I can discuss it with. Without, without, without reading that, I don't want to put my, and I'm not trying to, to act like I don't know. I don't want to, I don't want to say, yeah, I would have voted yes, if there was something in there that would have swayed me to vote no. Um, so I, I, I just can't answer that.
So, so I'm, you know, I treat everybody the same and with the same respect. That's just, that's just, that's how I was brought up. And that's, I think I have that reputation here in the Tri-Cities of just giving everybody the respect and kindness and, 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 and doing those type of things. But in this case, Mike, I think it's a great question. But I'm one of those nerdy, nerdy guys that, you know, I wasn't there to hear the specifics of why or what. And I always want to know because what I'm going to do before I make a decision, I've always done this. I go out and listen to the public. I listen to staff. I listen to other elected officials. Excuse me, I lose my voice. And then I'm going to go ahead and do my own homework. I'm going to go with my heart, my gut and what's right. And that's how I'm going to vote. And that's one of the things I, I've always done. I don't care if, if it's, you know, if it's, uh, brings up, uh, some heat on me. It's important to do the right thing. And, and I think that's what my grandparents instilled in me is that you're going to serve your country. If you can do that, you have the ability to do that. If you're going to go ahead and take on and try to serve your community, you better do it right and treat everybody fairly. And so I apologize, but without knowing more on that, uh, I, I don't know how I would vote. And I'm just, I'm just being straight up with you.
I, I don't, I don't want either of you to be accused of ducking the issue. That would be a horrendous thing. So I want to simplify it. I'll, I'll put, I'll put it this way. So there are seven national or federal observances out there, today being, uh, the beginning of Hispanic Heritage Month, uh, that are aimed, that are civil rights for minorities focused, uh, toward groups that are either underrepresented or absent from the workforce. And that includes groups that, that don't make it through the glass ceiling. And so, um, you know, I, I think it's women, women's history, uh, Hispanic heritage, uh, Asian Pacific Islander, Pride Month. Um, two more in there, uh, African American and women's history. I think that's all seven of them. Uh, so I'll just simplify it. Uh, are you, uh, in support of these, uh, national observances and, and what they're designed to do?
Well, I, 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 I think that everybody has to be listened to. And those, those groups have a, have, we're in the United States. We have a constitution and the constitution guarantees that. So, so yeah, they, we should. That's, that's, that's part of living in, in, in the United States.
You know, I'm open-minded. I'm, I'm half Hispanic myself, you know, first generation, the graduate from high school, first generation to graduate from college. Uh, and when I served in the, in the military, you know, I served with all types of ethnic groups, uh, all different types of beliefs. And so on that, once again, I'd be open-minded to it. I'm not going to go ahead and shut down or, or, or feel pressured from any, any group or any other commissioners. I'm going to do the right thing. And once again, depending on what was said and how it was done in there, uh, you know, I'd probably be a part of that debate, uh, and we might go round and round a few times. Uh, but yeah, I, I would be an open-minded to that. Thank you.
So can I, can I frame that question just a little bit differently?
Ken, you're, you're going to be a troublemaker.
Yes, I am. There are often health issues that are specific to perhaps all of those groups. But off the top of my head, I would say, um, I think that, uh, public health played a terribly important role in combating the AIDS epidemic. And apparently monkey pox also has, uh, gay men are the most common to contract that. So that's one. Uh, black people have sickle cell issues. There are certain diseases they're more likely to die of. Hispanics, you know, I can't exactly speak to that, but I know there, there are some health issues that their community needs to hear. And if you go through that list, I think that's virtually all seven of them. Now, I admit that one should always say, well, wait a minute, what exactly are we doing? But that wasn't what I observed our county commissioners talking about. And so I think both of you are kind of ducking and dodging a little when you don't say, well, they're, I mean, neither one of you seems to be recognizing that there is a genuine health issue that should be talked about here. And wondering why.
Well, well, Ken, I, I'm going to answer that. I don't have a problem answering. I said I was open-minded to it, but once again, I wasn't part of that conversation. And, and you know what? If, if I was there, I would have definitely spoken out and you, and everybody would have known my position. But I, I like to be part of it and know what I'm talking about and exactly what happened there. So I, I can't be pressured in answering a question that I, I wasn't a part of. But at the same time, I agree with you, Ken, that there are, there, there are health issues with all of those different instances. You said, when I was in the Marines, I ran a 17 kilometer race for sickle cell in Aberdeen, Maryland. So I get it. I get Hispanics. I get the whole thing. But once again, I had to be there. I would, I would have liked to have been there to have the package to read on and see like specifically what they were saying. And if it was something I didn't believe in with another county commissioner saying, I'm not shy to speak, uh, speak out. Uh, I think sometimes, uh, I can go ahead and, and I've been told, you know, I'm a professional and, and well, well, you know, a good team player. I can be intense when I need to be intense to go ahead and get the job done if I strongly believe in that. So I'm not trying to duck the question, but at the same time, I wasn't there to go ahead and be part of that conversation.
I, well, I'd like to, I, I brought up the story while, uh, while Ken was talking and I think this will simplify it because, again, we don't want anyone to duck it. The, uh, the, and, and it's just this, I'll put this sentence to both, both candidates. Uh, the gist behind the opposition and why there was a three to one vote, uh, was that the three commissioners, in the words of one, were quote, "against celebrating any racial, ethnic, even LGBTQ or whatever." That, that was the quote. And so, uh, I'll, I'll put the question back. Uh, would you support such a position?
Well, I would not. And under those terms, as I just, like, I just mentioned on the last question that, 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 uh, they should, all seven groups, the ones you, you talked about, um, should get a fair shake. And, and, uh, if that's all that that vote was about, and I was part of the conversation, I would ask the questions because I'm, I'm not going to ever vote anything until my questions are answered. And you have to develop those questions. If you don't think about it and just vote because everybody else is voting that way, the, you're not doing anybody any justice. And, and so I wish that I was privy, privy to those conversations. I wasn't at that board meeting when those discussions were going on that you're referring to. And I'm just curious why questions weren't asked to, to, you know, to, to, to make them more, more aware. Um, I don't know what the three to one vote was. I would, I, I, I don't know who voted three. We can sort of suspect who the one is. And, and, uh, so that's why, that's why I'm saying there may have been something that was, that, that clicked his button as far as how a conservative thinks. But in this case, it's not a matter of being conservative or liberal. It's a matter of doing what's right. And I think what's right is to support them. Uh, it sounds like to me that I would have voted along with the three, but I can't say.
And, and so you're not taken wrong, Bill. It was, uh, three, three commissioners voted to shut down all the communication. And so there was no communication on it at all and only one supported it.
I, I may have been on, on the one, and I know who that one would be. I think I mentioned his name.
Could I ask, could I ask Michael a question?
Sure.
Michael, we, um, you've got an impressive list of endorsements. Um, there's one endorsement that's missing and that's Jerome Del. Um, on both sides of the river, we've had county commissioners, sets of county commissioners, who have not been in the greatest of harmony. In fact, they've had, you know, fights and whatever. Um, is its lack of endorsement for you a sign that there is bad blood between the two of you over past elections? And can that possibly affect how you will get along if you're willing?
Great question, Jack. So, so once again, I'll be seeing Jerome most likely in DC here in the next week. And, uh, before that, we have, we've been on different, we, we sat on, uh, ECA together. And I, I wanted to get some information. We were doing a Zoom thing. It goes, hey, Michael, I'll go ahead and send that to you. I got it. I actually got it. So he sent it to me. So we're good. And then, you know, sometimes you get these friendships going and people don't know that you're going to run before you run, duh, duh. But I actually called him and reached out to Jerome probably just over a month ago and, and we talked and I said, hey, no matter what, uh, you know, if, if I happen to be blessed enough to get elected, uh, I want to go ahead and listen to your experience. Get me up to date and let's go ahead and work together. And he said it was absolutely no problem at all on that. And that was a call I didn't have to make, but I went ahead and ended up making that call because I thought it was important because we all need to work together to get things done. And, and he understood that totally. But yeah, we'll probably see each other, uh, in DC and, and we'll give each other a hard time in, in a good way. Uh, and, and so I think that's, that's a great question.
So we should probably talk about the wind turbine, uh, issue because that is such, um, a hot topic with so many folks. Um, and there's a bit of a division, you know, because the, the wheat farmers whose property that the wind farm, uh, you know, would be, the wind farm would be on, they're all for it. They're saying, this is our property. We want to, we want to, um, get that income, you know? And then the folks who don't want to look at the wind turbines and have all kinds of problems with that, they're, they're opposed. So where do you, how do you, how do you, um, balance that? Maybe I'll ask Bill first. How do you balance that? You know, the property rights of those who want to sell their, you know, rent their land out to the, you know, against the people who don't want to look at the wind turbines? Where are you at on that?
And that's a, that's a great question because property rights. Um, and, and I know that there was a list that was put out of 78 homeowners are, are own, people who have leased land. And so there was 78 names and know quite a few of those names. And, and, um, it is a, it is a big balance. However, my big, my big thing with the wind turbines is whether, whether they go or they don't go. The idea is to, is, is to maybe make them better than they are right now because it's so far along. So the group is looking at maybe making some changes to where it can be more acceptable. Um, so enhance it, enhance a bad thing. They're thinking, they're thinking that way. Um, as, but my big issue, and it's the same thing with the solar. Um, I'm not opposed to any type of energy like that. I just think that, that we, the people of the county should have a say in it. We, we have no say. It goes to, to EFAC over on the, on the west side and, and, and that's, and, and that's who makes the decision and who hopes to hear it. That's the hearing in the temple for the solar. And, and, um, so just give us the voice. So I asked, asked the, the president at that last meeting. I said, how come they're so convincing Benton County? And he says, well, it's the moratorium. Um, Benton County put the moratorium on any, any projects like this. So in order for us to get going on the project, we have to go over to this committee on the west side. So, so we're basically with that moratorium, we're pushing them over there and they're getting the job done behind their backs. So something has to be done with that moratorium so that this doesn't get done that way. Not that it's a good or bad thing. It's just that we should make that decision as residents of that county.
Okay, Michael, what do you think?
So as, as far, you know, property rights are super important to me, especially in my business. I, I just respect that. I think everybody works hard and they, you work that hard to get ownership of a home or land. By golly, you know, you should, you, you should have some of the, uh, rights to go with it. But in this case here, you know, once again, I, I think I, I watched, uh, the Badger Club presentation for people for it and for against it. I've talked, and I'm all about job creation. I've talked to labor about this as well. Uh, you know, and, and I know EFAC is looking at that. They're looking at doing an environmental impact study. I think that's going to come out pretty soon. Uh, and to show whether it's a good, you know, it's a sound project or not a sound project that goes to the governor's office for approval or not. Uh, I do think that, uh, that billion-dollar company that's going to bring, bring in those, uh, wind turbines here should have done more of their homework and got more engaged with the county and everybody that lives within the county. Uh, you know, I, I think the, the proponents for it, uh, they had a speaker there that, you know, said they did a 500, uh, persons, uh, poll or survey. And it, it tried to posture it in a positive way, but it was only about 20 to 30%, I believe, of the people that were really more positive about it. Then on the other side, you had the Tri-City Original and Chamber of Commerce where they did over 2,500, uh, uh, vote. I mean, that 2,500 survey, people surveyed. And on that one there, you know, I wrote it down because I thought it was so important because I wanted to make sure that, you know, I, I understood it. Uh, and it said, uh, very, uh, negative, a very negative impact. You know, 81% or birds, it was 81% that it was going to be a, a negative, a very negative impact. Uh, few shed 80%. Decommissioning of tur, uh, turbine disposal, 77%. Flashing lights, 77%. Tourism, 70%. Blade, uh, flashing, you know, 71%. When you talked about the positive, very positive, it was 33%. Uh, clean energy. And by the way, we are very clean here in Benton County. I talked to Rick Dunn over at the PUD there today and 80% of our power comes from hydro power. 80% of our, of our power, 10% of it comes from nuclear. That's 90%. The 10% natural gas and those type of things. So we're pretty clean where we're at here. But what they're, and I want to do two more things real quick on this because I think it's an important issue and especially if people are watching this. One of the questions was asked, in your opinion, is the Horse Heaven Hills Wind Project worth a, uh, worth the personal, personal, environmental and economic impact, uh, impacts? 2% said don't know. 19% said yeah, a yes. 79% said no. And so these wind- And so these wind farms are going to be the size of, approximately the size of the Space Needle. And they're doing that to try to get more impact from the winds for the energy. But when you look at some of the renditions they showed during the Badger Club presentation, we're going to see that really, really well, uh, here in the Tri-Cities, which can impact, uh, property values and a lot of different things. So I think there's other projects in the works that I know about that are coming potentially that we can go ahead and create more jobs, uh, 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 for skilled labor and professionals. But I just don't think this is one that's, you know, it's, it's, it's not a good fit for the Tri-Cities right now. And last but not least, because I think I'm kind of passionate about this, because I'm personally against the wind farms, uh, from all the information I've seen is when we need that energy, when it's super hot is when we need it, when it's super cold is when we need it. But the wind doesn't blow when it's super hot and super colds and, and, uh, so it's, it's not a dependable source here for us. And, and, and I'm kind of, that's, so you kind of know my position on that. Thank you.
Sure, sure. Um, we're going to be wrapping up here. Um, so, uh, we like to ask our candidates if there's, um, a question that you wished we would have asked and/or a question you'd like to ask your, uh, opponents. So Bill, is there a question you wished we had asked you? And do you have a question for Michael?
Well, well, I guess, I guess you didn't ask about endorsements.
Okay.
I don't know if that, if that would make a difference, but I would like to address some of the endorsements that I've seen. Um, well, uh, recently, like I said, um, Barry Bush and the Benton County Republican Party. But then, but then a lot of the people who I've worked with, uh, is a, are a part of these endorsements. And that's what I was looking for. I, 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 I didn't call everybody I knew looking for somebody from, from like the city council here or, or whatever. Um, and Pasco really wasn't, uh, there, there are some issues in Pasco. And, and, uh, I stayed away from Pasco and Franklin County. Uh, but Dwayne Davidson, uh, uh, some of, some of them that, that I should mention, let's see here, I'll just read it from here. Uh, Dwayne Davidson and then some senators, uh, Phil Fortinato and Mike Patton. Um, legislators that I worked with locally was Skyler Rude and Mark Clicker and Tom Dent with ag issues. Um, Roy, Roy Keck with the port, uh, Bill Lamson from business, and then Jerome Delvin. Uh, Todd Kimball, he's a Walla Walla Commissioner. Chuck Amerin is a Columbia County Commissioner, the mayor of Fosser, Randy Taylor, the police chief of Fosser, David Giles, uh, mayor pro temp of Benton City, Bill Reed. Um, and, and then several others. Uh, I just thought I wanted to get that across to you to show you that, uh,
Sure, sure.
Their support.
Okay. Michael, do you have a question you wished we would have asked you, a topic? And, and do you have a question for Bill?
No, you know, as far as endorsements, I'll do that in my closing. It's, it's, it's a lot. But, you know, I think one of the things, I'll bring it up real quick. As far as endorsements and stuff, you know, I ran, I, I, I didn't know I was going to run actually until about, uh, three or four days, but maybe a week before filing week. And so I wanted to wait. I always wait for endorsements until after filing week so that people could make a good educating decision on who's running and see who they want to endorse. I think that's the right thing to do. And I hold off, uh, on, on other ones until to see if I actually make it to the general election. So that if I don't, uh, there's no hard feelings between the people that have potentially endorsed me and maybe the person that would, uh, be in that office. But I think, uh, a lot of the people that, uh, you know, like Randy Taylor, the mayor of Fosser, we talked and goes, hey, I really got to, I really appreciate, get to know you. I feel much better now. And so we've talked to a lot of different people and the city council members and stuff. And so I, I think I feel pretty comfortable with everybody and, and endorsements I'll just bring up at the end. And as far as Bill and myself, we get along well. We can tease each other. And, and once again, Bill, you know, may the best person win in the, in the general election.
Well, likewise. We get along well. And, 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 yeah, my last Senate campaign, that, that, that was some, some dirty politics and don't want to see any of that again.
All right. Okay. So Bill, why don't, um, would someone remind me who went first on our opening? You went first. That's right, right. You mentioned the A, April Alvarez. Okay, Bill, I'm going to let you go first for closing. So, um, just when you, when you get going, I'll set the timer.
Okay, two minutes?
Yep, two minutes.
Okay, so in closing, and I probably won't even take the two minutes because it's going to be from the heart, nothing scripted. I, I, you asked a lot of good questions, you know, you know, where I stand on the issues. And, and, uh, all I want you to know is that Mike, I'm extremely a passionate person. I'm in it because I want to help people. And, and locally, there's nothing better than somebody that you've helped. This happened to me in Fosser. I was coming out of, out of my, my tasting room, uh, downtown. Somebody was coming out of the chiropractor. He said, Bill, what he said was, you saved my life. But that, that's what he said. And I looked at him, I said, what do you mean? And, and he said, he said, when I called your office, I was at Witsing and, and we, we were not able to do anything about my disability call. And got it, got, got stopped on it. I made some phone calls. One thing led to another. His problem was solved. He was coming out of the chiropractor and getting ready to go play golf. So there's nothing, that feel-good thing is so important. And helping people is that's how you get that. And that's why I'm in this. I want to help the people of Benton County.
Great, thank you. All right, Michael.
I got mine prepared. I'm going to read mine just because I, I think it's important for the public. So once again, my name is Michael Alvarez, and I'm the current mayor of the city of Richland. I have a proven track record of saying what I'm going to do and getting it done on the behalf of the citizens of the county. I'm known to work with other community leaders well and efficiently and very humbled to have a good reputation uh, for leadership, teamwork, uh, and professionalism here in the Tri-Cities. I already do a lot of job duties as a county commissioner does, being the mayor and a city council member. Both city council, uh, members, mayors, city count, uh, county commissioners, we do a lot of the same work, such as budget and financing, planning and zoning, uh, public roads, public works, parks, resolutions and ordinances. I sit on a lot of the same boards as, as a county commissioner does. Uh, this would be more of a lateral move for me, uh, as we do a lot of the same work, uh, already, but it would be more of a county-wide thing now. Uh, I've been endorsed, proudly endorsed by our Richmond firefighters, our Kinnawick firefighters, and heavily supported by our local law enforcement. I'm endorsed by two of the three county commissioners, Sean Small and Will McKay, and the county treasurer, uh, Ken Spencer, who is the one who asked me to get into this race to bring my financial and business experience heels to Benton County. I'm also endorsed by the mayor of Kinnawick and the mayor of West Richland, the mayor pro temps of Richland, Kinnawick, West Richland, as well as state senators, state legislators, professional organizations, the Franklin County Sheriff, uh, dozens of local small business owners and unions. Most importantly, I'm supported by thousands of Benton County residents, as shown in my most recent primary election, where we see nearly twice the number of votes as my opponent did. I want this job. I'm asking for your vote on November 8th. And if I have it, I'm asking to ask your friends, family and coworkers to vote for me as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for joining us today. It was lovely to have you both. We really appreciate your participation. And thank you for running and giving the voters a choice.